I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 7th, 2017 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Legions? Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers and in the entryway. We don't have any presentations tonight. Ms. Coomer, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. Papillion Commons Development Team has asked for small group meetings to discuss their project and answer questions, and most of you have already responded and meetings are scheduled. If you haven't responded and are interested, please let Ally know. Thanks. If you haven't heard, Brian Craig, Chief Building Official, has accepted a position in Sheridan, Wyoming. He will be managing their building, planning, and economic development departments. Congratulations, Brian. We hate to see you go, but wish you and your family very well. He's here tonight, so... The fire department has scheduled three separate house burns: Saturday, November 18th, the former Schram House at 106th and Schram Road; Tuesday, November 21st, a house in Trailside Acres; and lastly, the two houses on Lincoln Road are scheduled for Tuesday, November 28th. If you would like additional information or desire to participate, please let Chief Bose know. You may have noticed that Marty Lemming and Jeff Thompson are missing tonight. They are attending the American Public Works Association Nebraska Chapter Annual Banquet. Marty Lemming is being honored and receiving the 2017 Leader of the Year Award. When you see Marty, please congratulate him. And finally, Lincoln Street is expected to open prior to Thanksgiving.
Any questions? Thank you. Do we have a motion to prove the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1791, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 85, Animals of the Papillion Municipal Code, to Allow Many Pigs as Pets Within the City's Corporate Limits, introduced by Councilman Tom Mumgarth. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Item D2, Ordinance 1792, An Ordinance to Amend the 2017-2018 Fiscal Budget. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Kluk. Item F1, Resolution R170200. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve an application for moving a building or structure permit to move three buildings from their current location at 11009 Schram Road to their future locations at 10116 Fairview Road and 9712 Fairview Road. The applicant is Ron Tex, and this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents are here. The applicant is here. Don't know if you want to say anything or not. And if you don't, are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R170200?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thanks. Next is Item F2, Resolution R170203, A Resolution to Approve Right-of-Way and Easement Acquisitions for 120th Street from Cornhusker Road to Roberts Road in an amount not to exceed $24,000. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R170203? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R170207, A Resolution to Prove the Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Papillion Community Center and Field House with Sampson Construction Company. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R170207?
Motion.
Wow. Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. I'll call for proponents. I know there's a few people that want to speak, and I want to go ahead and make an introduction as part of that as well. In the council packet was a timeline, and this was in the public staff report. There was a timeline, but there's one at your chairs as well. I want to do this more for the sake of the public. If somebody hasn't been following the project, there was a park master plan that was done in about 2003 that had a lot of items in it that kind of relate to a community center. Big expensive project, so nothing was ever done with it. Seven years later, January of 2010, we had a council retreat, and we set five goals out of that retreat, and one of those goals was expand and improve recreational facilities. Did some small incremental changes out of that, but nothing large. And then the following year, 2011, the master park plan was updated again, kind of in line with that goal. And a lot of the goals that were in the original 2003 plan actually were reiterated based on the community input. So the recreation opportunities related to community centers kept rising up. So that council retreat was 2010. The master plan was 2011. And then in 2012, the state legislature passed a new bill which gave local municipalities the option for a half-cent sales tax with a supermajority vote of the city council and a public vote of the people. And so in the following June, we actually had another council retreat, and one of the outcomes of the council retreat was go ahead and look at what would a community center, what could a community center do if we use that authority of the legislature. And so we actually spent probably 18 months internally understanding the economic side of that LB 357 the legislature passed. Then in June, and so then we sanity checked with the council, here's about what could be done, and got some general direction of take it to the next level and keep planning. So at that point, June of 2014, we kicked off some internal planning. They had a kind of a general budget to work with based on that authority. And they spent 10 months just internally saying, if we built a community center, what's the programming in it? How is it laid out? Does fee structures work? And trying to get the concept firm. And that wrapped up in about April of 2015. And again, sanity checked with the council of this is kind of in line with what the expectations were of the retreat, and the general indication was keep proceeding. It was at that point we said, well, if it's going to go any further, it's got to be a very, very public process. And so we kicked off an external planning committee, had about 15 people from the community, I think it was 15, people from the community, all kinds of perspectives. The YMCA, school administration, we had the youth, we had seniors, we had representatives from the library board, the pro organization, we had some business owners, we had some business property owners, and then we just had several old-time Papillion people. So really tried to get the entire perspective of the community and the planning. That group met every month for five months, and then worked for about another three months. So that community committee was together for about eight months. The outcome of that was a little bit firmer scope of what a community center would be, validated a lot of the internal work and actually increased the scope a little bit from what the staff had done. At that point, their work wound up, and it came back to the council to say, do we want to proceed or not? Now it's time for a serious conversation, because if we're going to build this, the funding source needs to be that half-cent sales tax, not property tax. And so, June, January of 2016, the city council did take a vote to put it to the vote of the people. And I believe that was a unanimous vote, to put it to a vote of the people. May of 2016, then, it was on the ballot for the public to decide, and that did pass. And so that half-cent sales tax is now in place, and we're collecting that half cent now. And the ballot question was that money was dedicated to parks and recreation to include a community center. So it can't be used for anything else other than parks and recreation to include a community center. So that funding source is in place. And then at that point in time, from the time that the public approved it, that kind of kicked in a whole series of events then to start getting real serious about the planning and the implementation. Part of that, right after the public vote, was actually doing the construction manager risk process. And through that, there were a couple of votes there, and then we selected the, we solidified that Ally Pointer was our architect, and then implemented the sales tax. And then there was some initial bonds that were issued in support of it. We did some land acquisition in support of it. We expanded some roads in support of it, and then approved the capital budget in this last year's budget. And then October of 2016, we went through a whole process to select a contractor, a very competitive process, and Sampson Construction was selected as the contractor for this project in October of 2016. They then spent probably 13 months trying to take the concept and the general budget and getting that down to buildable plans. And with buildable plans, then, working out the budget. And so they're going out to bid with their subs, because what they owed us at the end of that is, we can build this scope for this price, the guaranteed maximum price contract. And so they've been doing refining it, looking at the scope, and there's a lot of give and take in there, and natural processes usually cost goes up and scope shrinks. What we found in this process is the scope stayed the same from that original community work. Nothing material was added or removed from the original community work. And actually, bids came in pretty favorable, and Sampson's going to talk to that a little bit. And so what's being presented tonight is, the council has taken 18 votes in support of the project already, and those are outlined in there for the sales tax implementation, some of the finances related to the bonds, some of the construction already. And so this is really just the tail end of a very long public process. This will be the 19th vote that's taken, and the vote, the question tonight is, do we grant the guaranteed maximum price contract to Sampson? If that vote is affirmative, if it's a yes, then tomorrow they are engaged and starting to build a building. And they'll talk a little bit about the timeline, I believe. If the vote is no, then we invalidate the work of the public group, and then we kind, we've got the funding source now approved, but we invalidate the scope that was set a couple of years ago and work through. And then we just kind of go back to the drawing board of what is the community center then. So this is the vote tonight for the guaranteed maximum contract. With that, just to make sure people are aware of the full scope, we've asked Jay Palu with Ally Pointer, who's been on here the whole time, to do a little bit of an introduction, walk through the building so you can kind of touch and feel it. And then Sampson Construction will talk a little bit, and then we'll call for general proponents and opponents. Jay, and if you'd state your name for the record.
This is Jay Palu. Good to see you all again. I'm going to show tonight, if I can get this to open. There we go. Jay Palu, Ally Pointer, Machado Architecture. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. It has been a long process. I shared with Tim a sketch that was given to us that was dated 2007. That was from the early recreation planning from the rec department. That doesn't look anything like what we're going to sort of be on today, but it was the beginning of the idea of this entire program. We're going to walk through the site plan, the building plans, and the elevation studies that are actually formalized in two documents I'm going to hold up now, so you can have a look at them. From the pictures that we started with, with the vision that was outlined by your public meetings and by your recreation studies, we produced two documents. These two documents outline the engineering systems, the structural systems, the architectural systems, and the finished details that led to a process that Sampson Construction has done on your behalf, which is issue to bidders these documents, clarification, specification, so that they could submit individual bids. And they'll go through the specifics of that. The mayor alluded to it. That process has been very positive. Right now is a turbulent time in construction, for good reasons. Everyone's busy. Your select contractors are busy, subcontractors are busy. The good news for you all, because of your process and how deliberate you've been with these steps, it's been on the radar for construction subcontractors for a long time. And they'll go into detail if you'd like to hear about that. The specifics of what your, what the bid documents are based on. In front of you, you see the overall site plan. As you know, there are many facets that are master planned into this overall park complex. The ones in front of you represent a portion of that, which are part of the bid for the guaranteed maximum price today. The high level is the community center, the field house, the lighted soccer football field directly adjacent to that, parking, the road that connects them all, as well as a number of things that are buried in the ground, of course, infrastructure, power, drainage, all the things that set you up for future expansion of this park to implement. This drawing also indicates Lincoln Road in its final stage, which we're just a few weeks away from. In front of you is a floor plan of the community center itself. Again, as Mayor Black alluded to, because of the sort of consistency of the pricing and the development of design documents, and the place the budget's going to be presented to today, there's no major scope changes, we're pleased to announce. The light blue on this, which is hard to see on the screen, but we have hard copies in the lobby that you'll be able to see afterwards as well, represents the community rooms, the classrooms, the senior center component, the library, youth space, the public lobby, including the amenities that we were hoping, which are the fireplace and the lobby for people to gather, the welcoming desk, natural light to the east and to the west. It'll be a very welcoming space. Towards the south, you'll see two key components. One is the community gym. This came out of those public meetings that the mayor talked about, where this gym is, will be a wonderful place to play basketball. It'll be a wonderful community space for gathering. It'll serve both purposes, athletics as well as community functions. Inside the recreation side of the building, you'll see the aquatics component. From the early concepts, there's been very little movement. Pricing was favorable, so zero entry, the lazy river, the zero entry for children, the play area, the water slide, all still intact. Truly, in the winter months, from toddlers and infants to seniors, there's something in this aquatics component. And fortunately, with pricing, that was all able to remain. As you go further into the complex, you'll see the three basketball or six volleyball. You'll see the child watch area, and then all the things that are in the building to make it work, maintenance spaces, storage, all the factors we talked about. As we move to the second floor, you'll see the running track above the six volleyball courts in the two-story volume. You'll begin to see in two parts, the cardio area, the weight training area, and part of the heart of this building, obviously, is the recreation office itself, where they will be relocating to. As we move to the field house, located a few feet away from the main community center building, you'll see we have a large soccer, open, turfed area. It comes with nets, so it could be subdivided. So we envision, and the building's programmed for concurrently a baseball team to have a soft toss area while a U4, U7, U6 youth soccer is practicing, the little ones, batting cages permanent on this level. And then as we go up one level, excuse me, you have removable batting cages that can slide out of the way to open up 5,000 square feet of athletic flooring that could be multipurpose. So we envision, when it's not being used by batting cages on the upper floor, other activities that Lori and Tim can program in there. Overall, the field house is around 80,000 square feet. The community center building is around 120,000 square feet. So we're right at that 200,000 square feet of space, and we've always sort of targeted that in the process, and we were able to land near that. As we go to the exterior, I'm going to show three images. It's always sunny in Papillion. That drawing looks a little cloudy today, but on that screen, it looks a little dark. What you're seeing here is the main entry, the community center. To the right, you'll see the aquatics complex, north-facing glass. As you walk up to this building, you'll see the slides, you'll see the activity. At night, the light, the lights in that will glow. The goal, again, from the beginning, being a welcoming building during the winter months, especially when options in our climate are limited, that aquatics will glow. The center of the screen, past the ornamental trees, you'll see the main entry. On the left is this, directly adjacent to that entry is the senior component, the library function on the second level, again, is the office. Continuing on to the left now, you'll see the gap between the two buildings, and you'll see the field house structure. There's an entry that reflects some of the components of the main entry of the community center, but this services the field house. Directly adjacent in this image to the field house entry, you'll see a small deck. That deck is off that spectator viewing platform on the second level of the field house, and it sits above the championship soccer, or I should say outdoor soccer multi-use field. That field will be synthetic turf, so we anticipate it being used for soccer in the afternoon, lacrosse or football in the evening. In the mornings, it could be open play area. The wonderful thing about the phasing and the way the budget came in is we're able to afford that synthetic turf, so the field can see a lot more use. This is approximately near the edge of the roundabout on Lincoln Road as we look towards the north. One thing that we've been excited about from the beginning about this site is that drops down from Lincoln Road, it allows us to put the building partially in the ground. It allows the building to sort of open up as you drive around the side. We also think that it nicely situates a lower portion towards Lincoln Road, and out of respect to the neighborhood across the street, the setbacks are adequate. There's, it feels like a building within a park, which we also thought was a nice gesture. On tight sites, it's harder to do some of those things. On this site, it works well. As you drive down into the park, to the right, you'll see the basketball, two-story space, and a person on the running track above, and then the aquatics as you pass it. As Mayor Black sort of indicated, and I'm going to, pardon how quick, I'm going to go back to the original site plan. There have been a number, the process has been smooth, and the fact that we had the right people from the city, we had the right people from Sampson Construction, and a great team of engineers at TD2, Morrissey Engineering, and then the Ally Pointer team. That doesn't mean a number of things didn't pop up. So those that worked through this know that there were engineering challenges that came across, there were approval challenges that came across with things that are out of everyone's control. I think the nice thing about the process that I remember most, and I think that council should be reassured about, we threw a number of things that were unique at staff at the city Papillion. Their everyday jobs are still going on. In the meantime, they're trying to program, answer tough questions about the future, and still do their regular jobs, and they did a wonderful job. We had no delays at any time from any staff member being unavailable. In fact, it was quite the opposite. I'll even say nice things about your building department, which I don't think I've ever done on record for any city ever. They were accommodating, they were generous, and I think as a result, you got a building that is going to last the city for a long time, something you should all be proud of. They did a wonderful job. With that, Mayor, if you have any specifics?
The only other thing I would say is, while the views, it's very aesthetically pleasing, a lot of it is very purposeful. I remember Jay talking a number of times, and I was challenging him, are we taking shortcuts in here that's going to cause us a cost later on using a cheap material that five years from now we've got a problem with? And constantly, Jay was talking about why materials were chosen, thinking about the long, long, long-term cost of a project, and had a lot of reassurance on, that's a lot of what influenced the design, is concern for the long-term cost of operating, and it's why some things are laid out the way they are, why there's some material mixes. But I came away very confident we're not taking shortcuts on that piece and causing an issue later on. Don't know if there's anything to comment there, but I do appreciate that.
No, thank you.
If there's nothing else there, we'll ask for Sampson maybe to come up and share a little bit, and then we'll open it up for general proponents, and then we'll call for opponents. And if you'd state your name for the record.
You've got to help me out. I'm David Kavalevich with Sampson Construction. Like Mayor Black said, just over a year ago, we entered into a contract with the city to be construction managers of this project. At that time, yeah, thank you. Part of, I believe, part of the reason that we were a good fit here is we do have a significant amount of experience in the athletic arena, and that goes back for several years. We also have been very fortunate to develop some really good relationships with the subcontractor community that I think proved itself as we went through the bid process on this project. Like Mayor Black said, we were involved in the design meetings. We helped evaluate those systems that he was talking about to be effective and efficient for the future, and really evaluate the cost along the way. We did several, at several stages, we did estimates, and then continually revised those estimates as new products and new ideas were put out on the table. I think when we finally went out to bid and construction documents were done, I think we actively searched out over 600 subcontractors in the community, and then also put it out and made it aware just in the public, so that if we did not reach somebody, that it was out there in the public, they could also bid the project. I'm happy to report that those bids came in favorably. All along, our budgets were really pretty constant, and we did pick up a little savings in the end when we were able to get the subcontractor bids back. We received over 200 bids back on just over 50 scopes of work, so we're pretty happy about that. In today's market, I think that's a very good turnout. In terms of the project's schedule, as you can see now, there's surcharged dirt, which is just a big pile of dirt out there, making the dirt underneath settle. It's anticipated that if this is approved, that we would start removing that surcharged dirt very shortly before the end of the year, and then move right into construction. It's anticipated that the field house is done by November of 18, and then the community center would follow and be completed in November of 19. Unless you have any other questions?
I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and call for proponents and opponents, then we'll get into council discussion and maybe call you guys up for Q and A at that point. Do we have any other proponents? Anybody that wants to speak in favor of the project? And when you come up, if you'd state your name for the record.
I am Beth Byrne, the current president of PRO. Along with me tonight, I brought some of our directors and board members. I stand in favor of this resolution. PRO has been providing youth sports to this area for several decades now. Our objectives are providing youth sports that instill in our youth the principles of sportsmanship, honesty, courage, respect for others, while at the same time, having fun continues today. The city has played an integral part in our organization, but primarily with our outdoor sports. And in the past, our indoor needs have been primarily met with the school system. Our programs had to fit into space and times within the school district calendar. The past several years, the availability of space has shrunk considerably for various reasons, and our need for indoor space has grown due in part to our outdoor sports moving indoors during the winter. Youth sports has changed dramatically through the years. The one-size-fits-all programs no longer fits the needs of our youth today. In order to keep our youth in Papillion, we need to provide programs from recreational to competitive. We are beginning to learn the value of programs that complement each other and not one is seen better than the other. To say that new community center, field house, outdoor turf championship field would be a game changer for us is putting it mildly. We stand ready to work with the city, especially Lori Hanson, Tim Moran, and Tony Gawen, and the rest of the Recreation and Parks Departments, to make this a gem for our city. It is really more than just courts and fields. We need a home. Having a place that was built with us in mind, instead of scrapping up leftover space year in and year out, will have a huge effect in the programming that we can provide. Having a place that we can count on that provides us technology, an area where we can easily work in. Having a place in our city that feels safe and easy to find can only help us in finding volunteers. We used to have at least the shed. Since the shed has been burnt, we have gone to pick up your equipment at the storage unit by the junior high, behind the bus barn, or even someone's house. For us who know each other, it works. For a new person, I'm sure it sounds a little creepy. For a new person, I'm sure it sounds a little creepy. On an annual basis, we serve over 2,900 youth, and more than 300 of them play more than one sport. This does not include youth that come to us as a team from surrounding communities or other organizations. These arrangements not only allow us to serve additional youth, but also enhance our own programs. We ask for your support of this resolution. We look forward to a new era in Papillion, not only for our youth, but for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Hi, I'm Regina Appleby, and I feel very honored to represent the Papillion Senior Center Board, as well as a whole host of active adults that come to the senior center. The past couple of years, we've seen phenomenal growth, and we see new people coming in every week. So we're bursting at the seams, and we're anxious to get to the new community center. We feel like we'll have more opportunities there to reach more people, and we'll have a little more room, hopefully, and then we'll have a whole host of activities that we can participate in there as well. So we're ready to move, and we'd ask you to keep voting yes.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Hello, I'm Steve Krieger. I'm a member of the library board, and so I'm gonna speak somewhat on behalf of the library board. Make certain I have my right notes, because that's my grocery list. You don't wanna know my grocery list. We've had numerous conversations about this for, about what you did in your timeline. We've been talking about this for a long time. We're very excited about our presence in the community center. And then I met last week with Amber, and Chris, and Lori, and Jay, and I was even more impressed by the whole concept of what you're, what we're doing out there. And the mission, not just the building, but the mission, what we're trying to do with the community. But I have a caveat, that this, our library presence, will not be a traditional library. We will not have traditional library services. You won't be able to go and check out a book. I see this library as basically an off-site reference library, or library, and a conduit to get them to our main library. And the win for us, for the library, and for the community, is that it'll probably put us in contact with people that might not otherwise be in this building south of here. They'll be running laps and swimming, or swimming laps and shooting hoops, and maybe we can catch some of them. So it's a conduit. And so it's a new challenge for our library staff, because they'll be basically marketing it. There'll be salesperson saying, there's this building down here that can really help you a lot. And so it is not a traditional library in that sense. Also, what it does do is it gives us a different venue, an additional venue, for our activities, our youth and adult activities that we do down here. And if you've ever been down to the library when there, especially the youth activity, bless those little kids' hearts, but it's pretty loud, and that's what it should be. But it'll give us a different venue. And I have full faith in our staff, that this is a new challenge for them, it's different. But they'll meet the task. I know they'll meet the task, and I was just talking with Becky back there, that some of our people were out at Hastings in this past, or just yesterday, I guess, and how you can utilize eBooks. So maybe you can be on the treadmill and read Moby Dick. That's a long run, but maybe, maybe you'd wanna do that. So, but I do hope that this is not considered a traditional satellite library, and that when the population of Papillion deems it necessary, that that is on the horizon, that there will be, that we seriously discuss, and hopefully that becomes an obligation because of our growth, that we will be doing that. If I have a couple other minutes here, another caveat. This kind of reminds me of the movie where James Earl Jones, the skeptical person in Field of Dreams, he finally says, this is gonna work, and he says, Ray, build it, they will come. I don't think there's any question there, people are gonna come. What you have to do is meet the challenge that they will continue to come and be engaged in the community center. Ten years ago, who would have thought that the brick and mortar of Gordmans, J.C. Penney's, Sears, and even the banking industry? The brick and mortar has changed dramatically because there are alternatives, and we have to stay on top of that. What are the alternatives? Our society is becoming more introvert, and so the challenge here is to always reinvent the community center. It's gotta be more than just a place to shoot some hoops and swim some laps. It has to be engaging. And when that comes, in ten years from now, I think rather than looking at the new community center that's just been built in another community like Papillion, a lot of bells and whistles and shiny and everything, rather than look there, look west, or look to the small towns, where those community centers are the hub of activity, the pride of the community, that's where the success of this community center will be, and I'm assured that it will. So, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Hi, I am Erin Jones, and like Steve, I also represent the library board, but in addition to that, I also represent families with young children and military families. My husband retired here, I'm sure you've heard, once you get on it, you don't get off it. So we've been here five years. He was active duty for nine months before he retired here in Omaha. And so we have made Papillion our home, and I am excited about this community center and what it has to offer to people like us, especially where the library services are concerned. And Steve kind of stole my thunder with his movie reference, but I'm gonna give you mine anyway. A couple of years ago, a couple summers ago, my two stepdaughters were here, a teen and a tween, and we watched the movie You've Got Mail. And as it started, I had to pause it and explain to them why it was called, what it was called, and why that sound you hear was the internet. And they looked at me like I had two heads. They had no concept of dial-up internet. I mean, I said, once upon a time, there was no phone and no Google. You went to the library, you looked up your, you know, you checked out your book for your book report, you checked out an encyclopedia, and it doesn't work that way anymore. And one of the things I'm most excited about with the library, having kids at home, is homework help, and all the digital services that they'll provide and be able to help with. My second grader uses an iPad at school. You know, there's gonna be a day, probably sooner than I'd like, that I'm not gonna know how to help him with his homework and his technology and whatnot. And Becky's team of young talent will be able to help with that. So, and like Steve said as well, I'm excited to see who all we bring in to our brick and mortar library by them having access to the library services at the community center. So I hope you guys are just as excited about it as we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seen none? Is there any council discussion? Mr. Stube?
Yes, Mayor. We're looking at over $48 million, and I think it would be maybe important to kind of go through as far as how we're funding it, how the half-cent sales tax is coming in, actual versus what we estimated, to kind of give the public an idea that, yes, this is a great thing for the Papillion community, we're spending a lot of money, and I think we have the wherewithal to actually pay for it also. So if you could go through that, Mayor, I'd appreciate that.
Let's make a quick comment, but I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Myers, assuming her voice holds out. At the highest level, and when we were out talking to the public for about, went out and talked, I think we went out and talked about 25 different civic groups during this whole process. What was shared at that point in time is the half-cent sales tax is for capital expenditures, build the building, not for operating expenses. So two components there, build the building and operate the building. So the half-cent sales tax is to build the facility, and the projections that have always been made have tried to be very, very conservative. We've been assuming about a 2% growth rate in sales tax, as we're doing our assumptions. Reality, we're sitting at 5, 6, 7, 8, 9% growth rate, depending on the quarter, anywhere between probably 3 and 9. And that's sustained over the last eight years, probably. And so we're very, very conservative on that side. The other thing we're doing is working to reserve some funds, and so if there is ever a dip in sales tax for whatever reason, below the expectations, we have a reserve fund to cover debt service for a period of time until it recoups. So we've made a lot of very conservative assumptions on the construction side using the sales tax. On the operational side, which is not a vote tonight, but I know we've had a number of meetings with council, and it'll be later on when we approve the master fee schedule, Lori and her team have been working almost two years on the operational plan. Who are the users? What's the fee schedules? Which components of it are free just because you're a resident? When does cost kick in? And what's the extra staffing, the utilities, to make sure that it carries its own without being a burden on property tax as well? And that's proven itself out with some very conservative assumptions. But with that, I'll let Ms. Myers weigh in with a few more specifics.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for example, last, excuse me, a voice, last year, just we collected seven months' worth of sales tax at the one-half of 1%. It came in at 1.8 million, which was about 2% above what we projected. This year, we've collected one month's worth of sales tax, and it is 11% above what we've budgeted. So we have, we were conservative in our budget projections relative to debt service for the bonds that will need to be issued for the community center. I feel very confident, based on our conservative approach about the repayment of those bonds. We've met with our fiscal agent, Bruce Lefler, on several occasions. He's prepared a debt service schedule that clearly shows with a small growth of 3 and 2% in sales tax that will adequately cover debt service and set aside money in a reserve account and still have excess funds to service debt.
So I guess the other question that I would like to ask, and I think I already know the answer, but I think it'd be important for the public, is that we are, we are going out to the bond market. And so currently, we are getting very good rates with the bond market, and I think you've also included in your estimate that there will be corresponding increases when we go off for additional bonds. So if you could just address that also.
I guess I'm not sure what you mean, Mr. Stube.
Are you, are you factored, we factored in rate increases? Yes.
Understand. Our first bond issue in 2016, we had, we issued and had an average interest rate of 2.58%. We have a conservative rate of 4% and 4.15% on future bond issues, again, being very conservative and ensuring that we have a cash flow that adequately will service the debt.
Mr. Florence?
You know, I'm gonna repeat what I think's been said. First off, as I look at this project, I don't know that I have seen a project, public or private, that's been better managed. You know, so kudos to all the city staff, they involved all the stakeholders, and they looked at everything they could look at. You know, when the project was introduced, I was in favor of the senior center, I was in favor of the community center. However, the largeness of the project, I was not in favor of. I think that's probably an understatement. I will also say that Lori Hanson has crunched the numbers, and Ms. Myers as well, like no one I've ever seen. And so I feel confident that they were challenged, as well as the architects, to try to not let the scope creep, and while I think maybe it did a little bit. You know, they've done a great job, and I think the community is backing this project. So I will be, continue to be an advocate for fees and lower fees, and making sure that the community can use it, but this is a really good project, and the city did a great job putting it together.
Thank you. Any other council discussion or questions? Seen none, please vote.
8-0-ase.
Motion passes, thank you. Just a couple of things, there will be a, because of the construction schedule, we're already starting to think of when a groundbreaking would be. I would say right now, tentatively reserve November 30th invitations will be going out for that. And then we will be working on a naming contest, opening that up to a little bit more public process to get more names in as well, and that should be announced fairly soon as well. Any other comments? No committees have met. Any other general comments from the floor? Seen none? Any comments from council? Mr. Mumgaard?
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that you may have been contacted by Project Extra Mile. They're having their meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock at the La Vista Police Department, and that meeting will have the Sarpy County DUI presentation. I intend to attend, and I encourage anybody else who can come, to come and hear that and see what that information might mean to us at our future regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few things from the last couple of weeks. Been busy from a development perspective. We've had several meetings with Alley Pointer and Sampson getting ready for tonight. Mr. Gowan, Councilman Ingberg, Councilman Gaines, and I met at Veterans Park talking about the next project down there. There's a wall that's being put in that kind of gives some definition to a given name, and that was in the budget. If you drive by, you'll see some dirt being dug right now for the footings of that. I think people will like that enhancement. So thank you both council members for the feedback on that project. Myself and Ms. Ruth Piper attended a robing ceremony. I think Mr. Mumgaard might have been there for Judge Tricia Freeman, next judge in Sarpy County. Sumter had its Twilight Dash, went very well. It's always a big event for the people that participate in the race series. Number of us attended the Oxbow Animal Health ribbon cutting. If you have not been out to that facility, very impressive. Go out and visit them sometime. Oxbow was a business that was just started on a family farm in Cass County. Over the years, they've grown to the point where they had a large staff, including scientists, workforce from Omaha and Lincoln, a lot of buildings on the family farm, and outgrew it, and ended up coming to Papillion and building probably a 250,000 square foot office manufacturing facility. If you go out to the Highway 50 corridor and drive back in there now, you'll see how that corridor is starting to redefine, very class building. Ms. Myers and I met with a couple of different developers on some active projects that are going on, mostly in the Highway 50 corridor area. And then Ms. Kluk, Councilman Gaines, Ms. Myers, Chief Lyons, and myself, had a visit about some drug education, and some things that might be able to be done in cooperation with the schools related to drug education, to continue to make sure that that problem doesn't enter our community. And we'll probably be having a meeting with the school district, make sure we got a good cooperative partnership there as well. We know, we had a lot of articles in the paper about boundary agreements and annexations, and everybody saw the letter that we were, we proposed an offer to Gretna on what we believe is a very viable boundary agreement, and that would probably settle things down for a lot of the landowners and let people know what's going on, and we both share the corridor. Ms. Myers did reach out and ask for a meeting to review that. They've acknowledged that they received it, that they need to review it, and that they'll get back to us for a meeting, so we're waiting on that. And then I think the only other thing to mention, Veterans Day, 11:00 AM, the American Legion's having a ceremony at the Legion, so encourage you to go to that. And lastly, Mr. Craig? I'm gonna stand up just so we can recognize you. It was mentioned Brian took a job in Wyoming. You have done an excellent job for the city of Papillion.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
8-0-ase.
We are adjourned.